All right, well, good evening, everyone. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I have six o'clock on my clock. So, welcome. This is the Sparks Planning Commission Meeting, Thursday, December 5th, 2019. Want to welcome everyone in our audience and everyone watching on Sparks Centennial Television and beyond. Appreciate everyone being here. Move on to item number two on our agenda. That is roll call. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Reed is absent. Commissioner Blakow?
Here.
Commissioner Fuehman?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Here.
Commissioner Vanderwell is absent. Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Reynolds?
Here.
Thank you very much for that. Certainly missed Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Vanderwell tonight, but happy to have everyone else here. Move on to item number three. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to provide a public comment. It can be a general public comment, something on our agenda or off. You have up to three minutes. This time, do we have any public comment?
Listen, I'm here because of a public comment.
For the, yeah, okay, we will have a separate public comment period for that, and we'll open that up, and thank you for letting us know. Okay, see, no other public comment, or no public comment. We'll move on to item number four. That's approval of the agenda. Don't think we have any changes or to tonight's agenda? Would the commission care to take action on the agenda for tonight?
Just determine if there's no changes or corrections on all locations, and I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Peterson. Is there a second on the motion?
One second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakow. All those in favor of the, to approve the agenda as submitted, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the meeting minutes. We have two sets of meeting minutes for the planning commission's consideration tonight. First up is review and approval of the November 19th Planning Commission Study Session Minutes. Thank you to staff. That was a pretty quick turnaround on those as well. But are there any, any commission care to take action on those first set of minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner?
I move to approve the minutes of the November 19th Planning Commission Study Session.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blakow. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Pritzos. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Those meetings minutes are approved. Next up is our November 21st, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. The commission care to take action on those?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Blakow?
I move to approve the November 21st Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve those meeting minutes by Commissioner Blakow. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor of approval of those meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Those meeting minutes are approved. Okay. Item number six. That's informational items. Do the staff have any informational items for the commission tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. First up, or the only item, it's PCN 190034. This is a conditional use permit for a church on North Truckee Lane. Welcome back, Jeremy, or sometimes I call you Ian.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Excuse me, Chairman Carey. Members of the planning commission, I am Ian Critten, your senior planner. As stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit to permit a church at 3160 North Truckee Lane. You can see the site outlined here on the vicinity map, outlined in red. The site is located just north of the intersection of North Truckee Lane and Bering Boulevard there to the south. So this site is zoned MF5, which is a multi-family zoning district. The building has been located, or was constructed, this location in 1975, and has predominantly been used as a dental office throughout most of that time. Churches are a permitted use in the MF5 zoning district subject to a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit process allows for public notice and for the planning commission and staff to review and look at the impacts of the proposed use and look for potential mitigations of those impacts. The primary potential impact for this request is parking. The site has 21 parking spaces. Based on the analysis that staff did of the uses within the building, we broke it down by the different uses being used there, they are required to have 16 onsite parking spaces. So their parking does meet the demand required per the code. In some zoning districts, the code allows for off-site parking agreements to meet some of those parking demand that the site has. This site, because it meets the parking requirement, wouldn't require one, but also the MF5 zoning district doesn't have that, section of the code doesn't apply to it. However, the applicant did go out of their way to acquire a parking agreement with the commercial site to the south here. In case they did have any overflow needs for parking on Sundays, they acquired a parking agreement that would allow for some additional parking there. Staff doesn't believe that that's necessary because it does meet the parking demand, but they wanted to make sure they went out of their way and looked for all possible parking arrangements for the site. The applicant also submitted a trip generation letter. That trip generation letter showed that the peak parking for this site is 41 parking, the peak parking demand for this site is 41 parking spaces. Their peak hour parking demand, I should say. However, because it's a church, their peak hour really is just Sundays. Is that the parking demand? The traffic analysis, or the trip generation letter showed, basically used the Sunday for the whole week. And so the average would actually be far lower, but they were just using that one day because that's really their peak hour, and they wanted to make sure we understood what their, the demand was going to look like, was 41 trips. And so that's, that 41 trips, we need to remember, is an in and an out trip. So 41 trips would be generated essentially by 21 cars, or, you know, you can't really have an odd number. Sometimes they show up that way, but that just means somebody's staying through that first whole hour, right? There are five findings associated with conditional use permits. Finding C1... I'm sorry. I lost my place on my notes. I apologize. Finding C1 looks for compliance with a comprehensive plan. This site has MF14, has an MF14 land use, comprehensive plan land use. That is a multi-family land use and has a zoning of MF5. It's kind of a long and interesting story about how it ended up with multi-family zoning. The site was actually developed under a commercial zoning, and then subsequently, when the condos that kind of surround it were built, the whole site was zoned MF5, and then there was a special use permit at the time, and that's kind of carried on through to this site being an established office use in a multi-family zoning, which is permitted by the code through the conditional use permit process. But it's just a little odd that it's got so much multi-family, both designation and zoning, but hasn't ever really operated that way. So it's a little odd, but that's how it is. Churches are a permitted, are permitted actually in all zoning districts in the city of Sparks. In this specific district, they require a conditional use permit, which is the case with a lot of zoning districts. But as the use is permitted in the MF5 zoning district, and MF5 is a permitted zoning in the MF14 comprehensive plan land designation, this use is compatible or in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Finding C2 looks for compatibility with adjacent uses. The uses adjacent to the site are multi-family on the north, the east, and the south, and then single-family across North Truckee Lane to the west. Staff does believe that a church use is a compatible use with adjacent multi-family, or with the adjacent residential uses. Finding C3 looks for impairment of natural resources. As I stated, this site has been developed since 1975. The change of use from a dental office to a church will have no significant impacts on environmental, the environment, or on the availability of natural resources. Finding C4 is typically in conditional use permits is kind of where the rubber meets the road in terms of looking for identified impacts and then suggesting or requiring mitigations to address those impacts. Really, the only identified impact or potential impact that staff really saw with this use at this location was the potential impact of parking, but as the parking demand, or the parking required for this use is lower than the parking provided, the 16 parking spaces being required and 21 being provided, we really didn't see that as needing any additional mitigation beyond the fact that it was provided. The provided offsite agreement isn't really totally considered in this case because it doesn't really apply as being able to be applied to required parking. They provided it as an additional overflow, just in case they needed it to make sure they had something to show where those overflow parking would require. One of the conditions of approval, also because of this concern with parking, is that there would be a maximum occupancy of 100 participants at the church, and that was to try to make sure that we didn't overblow this property and cause additional parking burdens on the surrounding area. There is a parking, there is parking congestion in this site along the street and so forth that we have heard from residents in many cases, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't unduly adding to that potential. Obviously, on-street parking is public parking and is available to everyone in the public at any time. However, we didn't want to cause, create a, or approve a use that created an undue burden on the surrounding area. And then finally, finding C5 looks at public notice and a public hearing. This, public notice of this was mailed to 203 property owners that are within 500 feet of this site, and public notice was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal. This meeting will satisfy the public hearing requirements. Staff is recommending approval of this request, and I would be available for any questions that the planning commission may have. The applicant is also here if you have questions for them.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Does the commission have any technical questions for staff? Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, one question. Isn't there another church just a couple blocks east of that one?
I'm not aware of additional churches nearby, but I know there are some in the general vicinity, but I don't know where the nearest one is.
Seems to me there's one down there on Goldie or something like that.
The old Holy Cross?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then also, isn't there on Bering Boulevard a Christian school even?
Yes, here is the XL Christian School. It is located right here.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Now, that takes a different zoning, doesn't it, the school?
Schools typically would look at PF zoning. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the exact zoning on that site is.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get, if the zoning of that site would be similar to the zoning on this site.
No, this, this site has a, is it PF? Yeah. So Karen Melby, the Development Services Manager, confirmed that it is PF on this, this school. It was previously another use, but the, it doesn't have the multi-family zoning that this site has, which is just kind of an oddity for this specific property.
Yeah, but the multiple families still will honor churches.
Yeah. It does allow churches through the conditional use permit process.
And then my final question, and I'm through, is when they, from alterations from barbershop to church is going to be quite involved, they do have to go through the building department for all that?
If they have any, what we call tenant improvements, interior construction projects, they will have to go through the building department. If there's any sort of substantial facade alterations, that would probably require an administrative review. We'd have to look at that when those, those potential things came in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Blakow?
Are you aware of the complex to the south, all the condos in there? They're within compliance for their parking?
No, we did not look at the condo adjacent to look at their parking, whether or not they were compliant.
Find out whether or not that's the root cause of the parking congestion on North Truckee Lane.
The, we, when this site, so this site was operated as a dentist's office for many, many years, and then, I believe it was in 2015, 2017 maybe, they, a new occupant was looking to go in there and the, they applied for a business license, and there was a lapse of more than two years for a business license to that site. And that's typically how we determine whether or not a non-conforming use or something that would require a conditional use permit. If it, if it's lapsed, that's how we usually can tell for businesses, is if you're, if you don't keep up your business license, that's kind of how we can tell, okay, that, that business has lapsed. And so when that new business wanted to come in, we said, hey, you got to come in and essentially refresh this conditional use permit, come in and get it reestablished because it had lapsed. When that came in, there was a lot of public comment, a lot of public comment pointing the finger further down the road at the vet office. I can't verify that that's where all the parking's coming from, but that was the predominant accusation. That sounds a little strong. Hypothesis posed by the people who came and talked about the concerns of parking last time, there was an issue at this site.
I mean, just looking at it, it looks to me that there's sufficient parking around the area, so I don't see why there's such a big problem. But, I don't know why. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Blakow. Are there any other technical questions for staff before we move on? Okay, thank you, Ian. At this point, I'd like to provide the applicant an opportunity to come up, address the commission if you'd like, provide the background on the project and any other info before we open up the public hearing. Thank you, and welcome. Just please state your name for the, for the record, and just a little bit about the project and any other info you may wish to provide the commission. We may have some questions after, after you're done.
We're just interested in...
State your name.
Patricia. Patricia Tow.
Pastor Patricia Tow.
No, we're just interested in purchasing this building to house, a house of worship.
Thank you.
I'm Claudia Townsend. I'm the commercial broker. We've been working on looking for a building for about three years, and they've been in business, gosh, I don't know, 37 years. So they've always paid rent, and their hope is to, you know, own. And there is, they're very established, and they've been around a long time, so they kind of have their members, they kind of know their, you know, seat count. They feel very confident with that so far. And we tried to put that in our detailed packet that we provided to the staff. So if you have any questions, I'm, we've been up till midnight a few nights, working on this, several nights. We didn't even Skype. We actually were in my office, actually up till midnight. So if you have any questions, we probably can answer them.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Patricia. Thank you, Claudia. Does the commission have any questions for, for the applicant? Okay, seeing that you're off the hook, thank you.
Okay, good.
All right, at this point, I would like to open up the, the public hearing on PCN 190034. If there's any members of the public that'd like to provide a public comment on, on the proposed conditional use permit, this is the opportunity to do so. If you do, we ask that you please identify your name and your address for the record, and then we have a comment card that we'll need to have you submit to our commission secretary. So come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Ralph Battell. I live at 3153 North Truckee Lane, directly across from the building. And several years ago, I was here when they were putting the permit for the dental office, and it was about the parking. And I'm not saying that this new organization will create a problem, but there is 80 employees over at North, at the Truckee Bering Veterinary Hospital. And so our street is packed. We have cars going down there 50, 60 miles an hour at times, and, you know, it's just very unsafe during rush hour. There are, there's a place in town here where they have residential parking signs up that is put up by the city. My camera doesn't do very good with taking pictures. And so, but these are on 13th and 14th Street of E Street. I got better ones on my pad if you want to see them.
That's okay. I think we can have these.
And then I have an email from one of the employees when I asked her about getting those in my neighborhood, just on our side of the street. And here's the response, because it was approved by city council. So it just has the paragraph that it was approved by city council to have parking, for residential parking for those two areas. And I'm just requesting that we get parking only for residents on our side of the street because we just have no parking seven days a week now. And so, and Bering Veterinary Hospital is open seven days a week, so we get parking there. They have overflow parking in the lot behind them, but that still does not cover 80 employees when they're there. It is just horrible to park. Sometimes it's very hard even for me, my neighbors, to get into their driveway. And so I'm just requesting we get residential parking on our side of the street. It's a nice neighborhood to live in. I've been there 10 years, and, you know, I got great neighbors.
Thank you, Ralph.
Any questions for me?
I, I don't think, I don't think so. But thanks for the info. We'll, we'll take a look at it. We'll get, get it back to you before, before the, thanks for your, your public comment. Is there any other members of the public that'd like to provide a comment? Come on up, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, and then turn that card in when you're done.
Martin Sujinsky, 879 Palmwood Drive. I live around the corner there. I've lived there for, I've owned that property since 78. I don't have a problem. I think it's an excellent idea to bring a church in here. If they need parking, come around on a nice, nice street here and park in front of my house. No problem. The major problem that I see with these folks trying to find a space, over the years, the city of Sparks builds houses, houses, houses. What about the schools? What about the roads? What about commercial space like this so that it meets the needs of the community? I don't know who does the planning. The master plan goes back to 91. It was changed again recently. I just came down Pyramid Highway, and it was bumper, bumper, all the way to McCarran. Are we going to widen that road? Anybody? Anybody have an idea? Are you going to widen that road?
Yeah, Martin, we can conclude your, your public comments, and we can address those afterwards.
But the planning in the city of Sparks has a lot to be desired, okay? And the builders seem to get whatever they want. And what happens? Three years looking for, for property because it, it isn't incorporated into the master plan. And when it is, the builders come in and say, oh, a commercial space. Let's change that to residential. I can make more money. Am I wrong? Anybody, am I wrong? They have a need, the city needs to provide the needs for all services, not just housing.
Thank you, Martin, for, for your comments. I just turned that in to the staff down there. Okay, are there any other, come on up, ma'am. Just state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
910 Bristol Branch Drive. And I'm a little confused about the parking because I walked over there before I came in, and I'm to 21 parking places. So what about the overflow? Because I know there's going to be a lot more people when you're in the parks. Now, where does that overflow go besides the streets, which are already packed? And our guest parking has been used, 8 to 5, and then they're gone after that. So our guest parking is gone. So I'm confused. Where is the rest of the people going to park? Because we do have a parking problem now. And, you know, 21 just doesn't seem like very much in a church.
Okay.
That should be a consideration. Thank you.
That's okay. We can get you one, and it's mostly just to make sure we have your name spelled right in the minutes.
Okay.
We'll get you one. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, any other members of the public that'd like to provide a public comment at this time? Okay, seeing that, I will close the, the public hearing, and we'll bring this back to, to the commission. Maybe we could have our staff come on up and maybe address Nancy's question regarding parking and the requirements of the code.
Sure. So when we do an analysis of the parking demand for a use, those parking numbers are based on studies that are done of, of the parking demand for, for a specific use. There'll be studies where they'll go out and they'll count the number of parking spaces. In cases of churches, generally, you're not looking at single occupancy arrivals at church. And so the, the parking demand is not, you know, one per assumed participant. They, they do actually go down quite a bit. But that, that concern of, of, you know, where are the people going to park if there's additional parking? And that's why the applicant did submit that they, they, they've worked out a parking agreement with the, the commercial to the south to have some additional parking if they need it. From the city's standpoint, we look at your, your parking analysis based on our code, and that is the number of parking spaces that we would require, a minimum of 16 parking spaces, and they, they've provided 21. So they've exceeded the, the number that are required per the city code, and so we wouldn't look for them to require them to park, to require more parking spaces than that.
Okay, we, thank, thank you, Ian, and maybe after the, the hearing?
Sure.
Follow up with, with Nancy here.
Absolutely.
I think Martin brought up a question about, about McCarran and Pyramid Highway. Are there any plans to expand in that area that we're aware of?
Those are both end-out roads, so there's not a lot that the city can do. And in context of this specific requirement, I have not done any research to look into that. So I couldn't adequately answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I, I believe the RTC is looking at a grant application to extend it from, from Queen out to, would that be Los Altos or Disc?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure of the timing on that one, but just wanted to address those, those questions. Okay, are there any other questions for, for staff on, on this item? I had a couple. I'll jump in here. I wanted to follow up on my question from the study session on the land use and the zoning on this site has kind of been multi-family for several decades. I was just kind of curious if you were able to find any more research on why the zoning hasn't been changed, or that land use kind of keeps getting carried over in our comprehensive plan.
Well, I think the reason it's been continued to carry over is because it was a requested land use that, that has existed. And as far as when we go through and try to clean up, we're typically looking for mismatches in terms of zoning and comprehensive plan. And this is just was not one that was caught. The last time we went through and looked at stuff, this was not one that we, we looked at for, for that kind of cleanup.
Okay. And then I had a question concerning finding C1. In, in the staff report, it was talking about how allowing a church within the MF14 district would advance the, the goals of our, of the land use plan and the comprehensive plan. If the, I know that churches are permitted within the, the zoning that this in, but with, would the city prefer a multi-family use on this property given the, given the land use as opposed to a, to a church?
Well, I don't know that, that we could say which we would prefer. We really are looking at what was essentially requested. At some, at some point in time, that zoning was requested, and, and so we've honored that request, and the, the specific zoning district does allow the use that's historically been on the site, which was a dental office prior to this specific request. And so, you know, whether we would prefer it is not really the nature of the thing we're looking at, right? It really is, is it an allowed use? And then the answer to that question is yes, it's an allowed use in this district. And obviously, it has been constructed and operated as an office use, you know, throughout the life of that structure and site.
Thank you for the explanation. My last question was, how would condition number three in that one hundred person occupancy limit be enforced?
The enforcement there is, we would, has to essentially be boiled down to a complaint basis. If we get complaints that, hey, the parking is way well beyond, and then we would go out and we would, we would look at, we would do essentially a survey. We'd go out and see, well, what's happening? Are we exceeding that? And then that would be essentially an ability to use the conditions of approval to enforce that requirement. It's not necessarily a condition in which we would be able to keep consistent tabs on it, but it would be essentially a mechanism through which we could enforce it after the fact. We find out that they're exceeding that number, then we can, the city can use that to require them to, you know, adjust what they're doing, whether it was a special event or general, you know, attendance. And there would be a time where we'd say, you know, it may be time to look for another location because you've outgrown this facility.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff?
I have a quick question.
Mr. Blacco.
For the maximum capacity that counts all ages, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's how we've counted.
Thank you, Commissioner Blacco. How would the commission like to proceed on this? Conditional use permit? Okay, Commissioner Blacco?
I move to approve the conditional use permit CU one-nine dash zero-zero-one-three associated with PCN nineteen dash zero-zero-three-four, adopting findings C1 through C5 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to these three conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blacco. Is there a second on the motion?
All second.
Okay, thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Peterson. Okay, any discussion, comments, questions concerning the motion? Commissioner Fueens?
Commissioner Fueens, I would like to see if administrative staff could look at, in my time at the commission, this is the second time that parking on North Turkey Lane's been brought as a concern. And I know they are public ways. And I know dibs aren't, you know, quote unquote, dibs on parking spaces aren't usually a preferred mechanism. But if we could follow up with the city manager on Mrs. Seuss's email to possibly look at putting some residential signs only and possibly follow up with the public, he gives Mr. Patel's public comments, see if we can move forward through the city's manager's office and possibly alleviates the parking on North Turkey Lane for the residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Fueens. Is there any other discussion before the vote? I had a couple of comments for the record. Certainly concur with Commissioner Fueens' comments on the parking issues and seeing if we can maybe get the residential. It sounds like there is, there is an issue. Appreciate the public comment tonight. I concur with staff's recommendation. I think that the condition number three is pretty good and it's going to help mitigate the impacts to the surrounding uses. And I would encourage the applicant to adhere to that hundred, hundred person occupancy limit. And I appreciate the applicant taking the step for the overflow parking on the Sundays. I think that that will help with the issue. I would just also make the comment that on the land use and the zoning on this site, I have a concern. You know, we've seen this in other areas of the city where we have, you know, non-conforming uses per se because of the zoning. And when they burn down or they have a tough, they have a tough chance of getting rebuilt or even getting insured with those, that zoning on it. I would encourage in our next comprehensive plan update that we take a look at this property and, you know, assign it the uses that have been approved by this commission and would have kind of been existing for several decades now. And I think it's been, it's been pretty clear, you know, that the preference from this commission and past actions as well is that they're okay with a non-multifamily land use and a zoning on this site by approving conditional use permits. I think it's time that we, we take care of the zoning and land use on this property. But I will be supporting the motion. Okay, any other comments from the commission before we vote? Okay, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Close nay? As have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ian. Okay, we'll move on to our general business items for tonight. First up is number eight. That's a selection of a commissioner to serve on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. This is to fill a term effective January first. From the following pool of applicants is David Blacco, Scott Carey, Frank Peterson, and Evan Prestos. How would the commission like to proceed on this item? Okay, if everyone's tongues tied, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Blacco to the Regional Planning Commission seat.
Commissioner Fueens, second.
I have a motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Fueens. Any comments? Questions concerning the motion? Okay, hearing none. Go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. We'll move on to item number nine. This is selection of a commissioner to serve on the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee, effective immediately. And it's from the following pool of applicants, David Blacco, Frank Peterson, Evan Prestos, Shelley Reed, and Diane Vanderwell. How would the commission like to proceed on this action? Okay, everyone, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just would like to say that I would be honored to serve on that commission as well as representative of the Sparks Planning Commission.
Okay.
Commissioner Fueens, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Blacco to the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Commissioner Blacco to Riff Tack. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Prestos. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Close nay? The ayes have it. Motion is approved. Congratulations, Commissioner Blacco.
Thank you very much.
Be a busy man.
Very excited.
Thank you for your willingness to step up on both of those. And also Commissioner Reed for, she expressed some interest as well, too. Certainly appreciate that. Okay, so item number ten, this is probably our most controversial item of the year. This is consideration and possible adoption of a resolution. Number two-two-five, commending Commissioner James Fueens for his service on the City of Sparks Planning Commission. We do have a resolution. I'll go ahead and grab that and we'll read that into the record. I will note it's a very, very great job on the frame, on the framing, Commissioner. So hopefully this gets approved. Resolution two-two-five. Resolution recognizing the contributions of Commissioner James Fueens. Whereas, James Fueens was appointed to the Sparks Planning Commission on February twenty-seven, two thousand twelve and served until December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And whereas, Commissioner Fueens served as chair of the Planning Commission in two thousand fifteen. And whereas, Commissioner Fueens represented Sparks in the Regional Planning Commission since two thousand seventeen. And whereas, Commissioner Fueens has unselfishly committed his time and knowledge to making significant contributions to planning in the city of Sparks during his tenure and as a member of the Sparks Planning Commission. And whereas, the Sparks Planning Commission meets on a regular basis, requiring Commissioner Fueens' attendance at many public meetings, workshops, and study sessions. Whereas, Commissioner Fueens participated in the Sparks Planning Commission's review of numerous major projects in Sparks, including Kylie Ranch North, Stone Brook, The Quarry, Wild Creek High School, and complete revisions of the Spark zoning code and the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan update. Whereas, Commissioner Fueens was always available as a mentor, sharing his experience and knowledge. And whereas, every member of the Sparks Planning Commission, present and past, is proud to have served with Commissioner Fueens. And whereas, the Sparks Planning Commission recognizes Commissioner Fueens' contributions to the Planning Commission and to the city of Sparks. Now therefore, be resolved that the Sparks Planning Commission acknowledges and sincerely appreciates the invaluable contributions that Commissioner James Fueens has made to the city of Sparks during his term as a planning commissioner. So that's the, you don't get it yet. So that's, that's, that's the, that's the resolution. It's been read in. Does the commission care to take action on the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion.
We have a, Commissioner Blacco?
I'd like to approve the resolution commending Jamie Fueens for his service on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second on the motion?
I've got the second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Before we vote, are there any, are there any comments concerning the proposed? Commissioner Peterson, this ought to be good.
You and I are the oldest here. Neely, what am I going to do? I really appreciate working with you for the last six years. You've been an inspiration to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners care to make a motion concerning the? I did have a text from Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Fueens, please convey to him that I have enjoyed greatly working with him on this commission. Will miss his insight and wit. Wish him very well and his family a very happy Merry Christmas. It's from Commissioner Reed. I would echo Commissioner Reed's comments as well. It's been a pleasure serving with you, Commissioner. And I appreciate all of your experience and knowledge in the three years we've served together. And wish you the very best of luck and sorry your term is expiring on the commission. Unofficial term. Okay, any other comments?
If the chair will entertain a comment from staff.
Sure.
On behalf of all the staff, Commissioner Fueens, we have very much appreciated working with you all these years, all your contributions, your steady, regular attendance and your thoughtful input on all of the decisions made by this planning commission.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments for the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion of approval of the resolution, please say aye. Aye? Close nay? The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. So thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, here you go.
Thank you.
Oh, we also had, in addition to that fabulous resolution, the staff commissioned, did have this very lovely plaque for James Fueens for his distinguished service from February two thousand twelve to December two thousand nineteen for the city of Sparks. So you're not just getting the lovely framed resolution that was passed, you also get this, this beautiful plaque.
Thank you.
A round of applause. So I think maybe if we could just get a picture of all the commissioners here. That would be good for the.
Even Frank.
I'd be invited for this. Just so you never have to see me again at.
Well, I'm sure I'll see you.
Oh, yeah. In the store, maybe.
Well, I did a little bit something to say since this is the last time I'm on the, hear me talk. Seven years flown by, didn't know anything when I came into planning. And one thing that I really noticed is how hard the city of staff works, City of Sparks staff works. And really thoughtfully planning out our city and very talented individuals that put a lot of thought into it. That really impressed me over the seven years with how hard you all work for the betterment of our city. So I just wanted to say really thank you for that. And since this is my last soapbox, I'd like to kind of make a plea to our state to definitely look at, you know, property revenue for municipalities moving forward at their next legislative session. So maybe not, open up some more revenue funds for not only education but municipalities in the state of Nevada. So I hope they will look at that moving forward. But really want to thank the staff, you know, going back, you know, Jim, who I remember sitting down seven years ago in the conference room with Jim and just talking about what planning is. And one of the things that he said, because I was coming into it totally green, say, don't be afraid to ask questions. And I hope that, I've always asked questions. Some of them were probably pretty silly, but I really took that to heart, too. Don't understand something, ask questions. And I appreciate that. I appreciate Karen through the years, Ian, and everybody else past and future. We've got a great city. You know, when it started seven years ago, we had definitely different challenges than we do now. I think the challenges that we have now are good challenges. They're a lot better than the challenges we had eight years ago, seven years ago. So you've got a lot of work ahead of you and growing our great city. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fueens. Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. That's public comment. Is there any members of the public who'd like to provide a general public comment? Councilman Abbott, welcome.
It's my first time on this side. Well, first off, yeah. Well, thank you all for serving, absolutely. I know I haven't been to a meeting for a little bit. I apologize completely, but Commissioner Fueens, this is definitely your day. So thank you for your service. You know, I remember when I first got elected, there was an item that I think I know what it is, or I'm not going to say because I don't remember fully. But you let me pick your brain on it and, you know, I was green. I think I still am fairly, I'm pretty new. But I appreciate your time back in those, in that time to answer those questions because I know they were stupid questions that I was asking you and you helped me out there. So I just want to thank you for your service and thank you all and Merry Christmas. So that's all I have. And I'll fill out a card. Oh, and Donald Abbott, nine, twenty-six, Fourth Street. I already screwed up, but.
Thank you, Councilman. I was going to ask you, yeah. Well done. Great, thanks for, thanks for being here and your support. Move on to item number twelve. This is comments from the commissioners. Commissioners, have any comments before we adjourn? Okay, I just wanted, since this will be our last meeting of the year, I wanted to express my appreciation to staff for all their hard work this year. Wish everyone very happy holidays. You certainly made my life a lot easier as chairman the past year. And I appreciate all that you do for the city and for this commission. And I also wanted to congratulate Karen on her upcoming retirement. That was some, that was some big news we heard at the study session. So I've had the pleasure to work with Karen on the commission, but also when I worked at the city as an intern. And wish you the very best, you and Terry and the whole family moving forward. And thanks for all that you've done for the city. And we'll probably see you around here at a planning commission meeting when it's time. But just wanted to put that and extend my appreciation on the record. Any other comments before we adjourn?
I just wanted to make one, too.
Mr. Blacco?
I just wanted to say it was also a pleasure working with you, Jamie and Karen. Thank you so much for your support. I'm happy to be here and you made it very easy for me to get into something that was new. So thank you both.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, I'll go ahead and call this being adjourned, six forty-nine P M. Thank you very much, everybody.